Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of October 6, 2025. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you are able.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Order of Business of City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any members of the public address in the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the testimony, the item, excuse me. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item shall come forward after the clerk reads that item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for a city council meeting of Monday, October 6, is a reminder that due to the Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Holiday, we will not have a meeting on October 13th. Next would be our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
All right, is there anyone to present on any consent agenda items? Is there any member of the public that would like to testify on any of the consent items? If so, please come forward now.
Yes.
Bowers?
Are you here for liquor license then?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items, I need items 2A through 2C introduced.
Councilman Duden, I believe, is going to introduce those.
Yeah.
Two, next, next one. So, I'll wave you up. All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and proceed. Two, two. 2A through 2C?
We can now vote on those items. Item 1A is reappointing Emily Decker and Christopher Walsh to the Star Trek Advisory
What are we going to do?
Board for terms to expire October 20th of 2028, introduced by Beckius.
Do you want to make? So moved.
Motion to move.
Second.
With withdrawal, those two?
Second by Washington, discussion.
Is that the one?
Seeing none, please call the roll. No.
To introduce the consent liquor.
Weber?
Oh, to introduce.
Yes.
Second.
Bowers?
2A and 2B.
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Okay, motion's been made for 2A, 2B, and 2C, is that correct?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Item 1B is approving the on-call professional services task order agreement between the
Correct.
City and She- Sheimer Associates, Inc., to provide preliminary engineering services
Okay, and seconded by Washington?
for the West South Street Bridge over Salt Creek, introduced by Beckius.
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. So moved.
Second?
Second, Washington, discussion.
Washington?
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
Weber? Bowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Duden? Washington?
Yes.
Yes.
Beckius? Duden?
Yes.
Yes.
Carlson? Beckius?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Weber? Item 1C is approving the on-call professional services task order agreement between the
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
City and Felsberg Hold and Ulevig to provide environmental services for the West South Motion carried 6-0. Item 1C is approving the on-call professional services task order agreement between the City and Felsberg Hold and Ulevig to provide environmental services for the West South Street Bridge over Salt Creek, introduced by Beckius. Street Bridge over Salt Creek, introduced by Beckius.
So moved. So moved.
Second? Second?
Second, Washington, discussion. Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Duden? Duden?
Yes.
Yes.
Washington? Washington?
Yes.
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items, I need items 2A through 2C introduced.
Councilman Duden, I believe, is going to introduce those.
Two, two. 2A through 2C?
What are we going to do?
Do you want to make?
Motion to move. With withdrawal, those two? Is that the one?
No.
To introduce the consent liquor.
Oh, to introduce.
Second.
2A and 2B. Okay, motion's been made for 2A, 2B, and 2C, is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Correct. Okay, and seconded by Washington?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4, our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call item 4A and 4B together. Item 4A and B is application of Cornoscar Bar and Grill LLC doing business as Cornoscar Bar and Grill for a Class I liquor license located at 1445 Cornoscar Highway and the related manager application of Saad Codida.
All right, welcome, and you can go to either side here with the microphone so we can hear you good.
Yes.
All right, you can start just introduce your name and address.
Hi, my name is Saad Codida. I'm owner of Cornoscar Bar and Grill. I want to open Cornoscar Bar and Grill as offering Middle Eastern food and then get drink and gathering peoples and enjoying their drinking Middle Eastern food and showing something new to community.
Great.
Yeah.
Counsel, any questions? The applicant?
Thank you, Chair Carlson. Good afternoon, and thank you for bringing your application forward. Could you tell us a little bit more, when do you expect to open, or when would you like to open?
Um, I just got my food license, it's active, so I want to, as soon as I get my liquor license, I want to open together.
It's one, I don't want to open restaurant and then later alcohol, so I'm just waiting
to get. Previously, I applied it and then I, I was have some issues went over C, it was inactive my liquor license, so when I came back trying to activate that, they let me apply it again, so as soon as I got it, it's ready to go.
All right, good luck.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this application? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
I'll call item 4C and 4D together. Item 4C and D is application of CMCC Partners LLC doing business as Arbor Ax House for a Class A liquor license located at 1821 N Street and the related manager application of Connor Peterson.
Welcome.
Hello. I'm Connor Peterson, I'm here on behalf of Arbor Ax House at 1821 N Street.
Great, and can you tell us a little bit about your application?
Yes, we are seeking a Class A alcohol license to continue serving beer, cider, and seltzer. We are currently operating under a temporary permit from the previous owners.
Great. Counsel, any questions? All right, appreciate it, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to testify on this item? Item 4C, 4D, if so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please proceed.
I'll call item 4E and 4F together. Item 4E and F is application of Mill Global LLC doing business as Millio Market for a Class C liquor license located at 800 P Street, Suite 110, and the related manager application of Tamara Sloan.
I believe the owner has asked to have that application withdrawn.
Well, are there, I guess we wouldn't need any, but, okay, a motion to withdraw. Should we do that when we vote on the liquors then, to wait, okay, to? All right, so right now, Tom?
In that case, I'll make a motion that we approve items 4A through 4B.
Motion's been made, and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Then on items 4E and F, make a motion to withdraw those.
Right, second. Second by Weber, discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 4, we'll move on to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions, and I'll call item 5A. Item 5A is establishing the property tax levy to fund the previously adopted budget for the city's 2025-26 fiscal year.
All right, good afternoon, Council Chair and Council Members. Joe Donlier, Finance Director, 555 South 10th Street. So the item in front of you today is setting the tax levy necessary to fund the fiscal year 25-26 budget that council passed two months ago in August. For the benefit of those in the chamber and our viewing audience, I'd like to take a minute to remind everyone of where we are in the budget process. The City of Lincoln uses a biennial or two-year budget. On August 5, 2024, the council held a budget hearing for the purpose of receiving input on the then-proposed 2024-26 biennial budget. The biennial budget was passed unanimously on August 26, 2024. This year, on August 18, 2025, as we always do halfway through the biennial budget, the council held a public hearing for the purpose of receiving input on needed budget adjustments. Those adjustments for the fiscal year 25-26 budget passed on August 25, 2025, and the 2025-26 budget went into effect at the start of our fiscal year on September 1. The budget does not propose any increase to the levy other than the amount needed for the stormwater improvement bond the voters passed last November. As noted in the resolution, that creates a levy of 29.732 cents per $100 of assessed value. So now today pursuant to Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 3.06070, and Nebraska Revised Statute, Chapter 77-1633, the council is set to set the levy rate necess, excuse me, the council is set to set the levy rate necessary to match the adopted 2025-26 budget. This is a ministerial duty in order to ensure the budget is balanced. And then lastly, on behalf of the Finance Department's Budget Team, I'd like to thank all of you for your work on this budget over the past two years. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Director?
Can you just, just for folks watching at home, can you explain what ministerial duty means and just kind of give a quick definition of that?
Um, yeah, I can give kind of my definition of it. So ministerial duty would be a duty that's required by, by this body to enact a previously contemplated thing that, that has been addressed. I may have to lean on city law to, to give a better definition, but that's kind of my, my take on it.
Counsel, other questions? All right, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there members of the public who'd like to comment on item 5A? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can proceed, and let's call the roll.
We can now vote on this item. Item 5A is establishing the property tax levy to fund the previously adopted budget for the city's 2025-26 fiscal year, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Second by Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. I'll call items 6A and 6B together, we're moving on to public hearing orders of second reading and related resolutions. Item 6A and B is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25005, application of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department to amend the 2015 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to revise the priority growth areas and future service limit on property generally located at West Pioneers Boulevard and South Folsom Street. Revisions include changing designations of LPS property near Southwest 9th and W, excuse me, and West Pioneers from Tier 2 to Tier 1 Priority A, and changing designation of two parcels south of West Pioneers Boulevard from Tier 1 Priority C to Tier 1 Priority A. And the related annexation 25005, application of Lincoln Public Schools to annex approximately 67.5 acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of the southwest corner, South Folsom Street and West Pioneers Boulevard.
Welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon, Chair Carlson and members of the council. My name is Broke, I'm Assistant Director of Operations with Lincoln Public Schools, officing at 800 South 24th Street, and I'm here today to ask for your support of our annexation application. We plan to construct a second educational facility on this property near Folsom Pioneers. Some of this land is already in the city, but about 20 acres resides in the county. Our request is to annex that final parcel. We believe that this will unify the site under a single jurisdiction, the city, which is a logical request that will support successful operations at that location and also fits with the one-city-one-district approach. As we've been developing the design of the school, we are looking at entries off of West Burnham and South Folsom Streets. We are considering connections to existing city domestic water and sanitary sewer in South Folsom, as well as connection to other utilities. We are not requesting any utility improvements, zoning changes, or waivers with this voluntary annexation. It is contiguous to the existing city boundaries, uses existing infrastructure, and is good for an important public project sponsored by the school district. So we thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? No?
All right, thank you.
All right, are there members of the public who'd like to comment on this? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
I'll call items 6C and D together. Item 6C and D is annexation 25007, application of Starostka Lewis LLC to annex approximately .54 acres on property generally located at West Avalanche Road and West Bear Tooth Drive. And the related change of zone 25021, application of Starostka Lewis LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential on property generally located at West Avalanche Road and West Bear Tooth Drive.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, and council members. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Suite 200, here today on behalf of the Starostka Lewis Development Group. This may be one of the smallest annexations we've ever done, .54 acres on a kind of a corner piece of property to our adjacent neighbor that has sold previous property to this development, but this allows us to bring on seven more lots on an existing road, and that's as much as they wanted to sell it this time, so we said we'd take it. So, the journey ends here with you to approve that annexation and change of zone to R3 for seven new lots in Lincoln. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Pretty clear.
Seeing none.
Thank you.
Please report, thank you. Are there members of the public who'd like to comment, comment on this item? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please proceed.
I'll call items 6E through 6I together. Item 6E is appeal of denial of request for deviation from access management policy requirements for the property generally located at the southwest corner of Northwest 13th Street and West Fletcher Avenue. The related use permit of 04004A, application of Highlands Town Homes LLC to amend the existing use permit to develop 3.45 acre outlot for 72 multifamily units with associated waivers on the property generally located at Northwest 13th Street and West Fletcher Avenue. Related Comprehensive Plan Conformity 25009 declaring area measuring approximately .70 acres of city-owned property generally located at Northwest 12th Street and West Fletcher Avenue as surplus. And the related change of zone 25013, application of Highlands Town Homes LLC to change the zoning designations on approximately .70 acres from P Public to O3 Office Park District, and on approximately .03 acres from O3 Office Park District to a P Public on the property generally located at Northwest 13th Street and West Fletcher Avenue. And approving the real estate exchange agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Parks and Recreation Department and Highlands Town Home LLC for the property generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Northwest 20th Street and West Fletcher Avenue.
Glad I don't have to read all that. Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th. The LTU item, the deviation, is the first of this five. Director Carey and Director Stuckey-Ross are both here for the later items as well. Just wanting to kind of kick off with kind of the scope of what we're here. On the deviation, the developer for this, this project submitted a request for deviation that had three deviation requests. The first two deviation requests were approved outright. We were willing to work with the developer and make those happen. The third one, which involves turning lanes, specifically the length of turning lanes, that is what the appeal is for. We attempted to reach a compromise and agreed to reduce the, the turning lane lengths by about 50 feet. That was something that was rejected by the developer, and hence they have filed the appeal here today. Ultimately, our reason for denial is grounded in safety first. Ultimately, turn lanes provide a safety reason. They allow people to get out of the through lanes where people are traveling through, wanting to get through. This is a 45 mile an hour lane or area. It allows them to turn over, have enough time to decelerate, and safely come to a stop or a turn as they're, they're trying to navigate these turns. The 300 feet that is required under our access management and is fully supported by federal regulations through the ASHTO program allows for additional, it's 250 plus 50 for stacking, so they can anticipate having two cars ahead of them in this turn lane. That's where we come up with the 300 feet for this. Ultimately, having these safety standards falls in line with our crash reduction goals and our Safe Streets Lincoln Initiative, which is under a federal Vision Zero program trying to reduce crashes and serious injuries and death in our, on our roadways, and balancing this approach for development and for all, all, all users in our area, whether they're pedestrians or vehicles. The requested reduction in turn length is nearly cutting the length in half from the 300 feet down to 155 feet. We believe that that does not meet the safety standards, and that would create an unsafe area where we would likely see many more rear-end crashes and potentially serious, if not deadly, crashes at a 45 mile an hour arterial zone. So for that reason, we are asking city council to deny the deviation request and require the 300-foot turn lane that is required in such developments. Happy to answer questions, or I can turn it over for additional city staff to provide information on the remaining elements, and then take up questions at the end if that works.
David Carey, 555 South 10th Street, Planning Director. I just, I'm here to kind of just put in context kind of all the different moving parts here. So we have the appeal of the denial of the request for deviation to access management that we just heard about, and then, so we also have a use permit as well as a comprehensive plan conformity on a surplus property action for, to be used for detention as part of the project, and a change of zone, that all of those come together for the project to work, and then we'll quickly get the, the applicant up here to talk about their project as well. And then we also have the sale of public land from the Parks Department that I'll just hand off quickly to Maggie to explain kind of what that piece is, and then we'll just want to make sure that everything was clear for you as we go into the hearing.
Good afternoon, Maggie Stuckey-Ross, Parks and Recreation, 3131 O Street. A developer approached the Parks Department last fall about purchasing a small area of land just north of Hold Number 11 at the Highlands Golf Course. The area would be utilized to construct a stormwater detention water quality cell to meet stormwater development standards for a housing project on the adjacent property owned by Highlands Town Homes. We have evaluated the request and determined that the surplus or sale of this area would not impact the course playability, and that it would relieve the Parks Department of its current maintenance responsibilities, which is a positive for the department. Although I stand before you to say we do not generally recommend ever selling parkland, this request is very unique. The proposed surplus area is small, it is not used for active or passive recreation, and it is a maintenance burden for our team. Selling the property would both benefit the Parks Golf Program and assist in developing additional housing. We're supportive of this request, and I'd invite the applicant up to provide more context.
First, we have a question, it looks like.
But we'd love to take questions.
Thank you, Chair Carlson. Director Stuckey-Ross, I've got a couple of questions, just to clarify, because you don't typically ask us if you can sell parkland. So, two things. You mentioned that it doesn't affect playability of the golf course, but then you said that it would benefit the golf program, and I wondered, is this land, would the sale of the land go into the enterprise fund, the golf fund?
I am going to ask Jocelyn to pop up and answer that question.
Okay, and then the second question, just for clarity, since you don't often recommend this, were any of the lands here in this park purchased with land and water conservation funds from the federal government?
I know the answer to that is no.
Perfect, thank you.
Jocelyn Golden, City Law Department, 555 South 10th Street. With regard to the question about where the funds would go that were going to be receiving is about $30,000, and that would go into advanced land acquisition fund, that's per city charter, so as much as we would like to have it go be dedicated to golf, it is not going to.
So to clarify, the benefit to the golf program is a reduction of maintenance?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Rick Onan with ANA Consulting, 2077 N Street. And with me is Bob Lewis with.
Bob Lewis, apartment owner, 7101 South 82nd Street, Lincoln.
Real quickly, the impetus for all of this, the area that we're kind of talking about, the amendment to the original use permit, area shown here, was originally not developed when the Highlands Town Home area was developed due to a lack of availability of gravity sewer. And developers sat on it for quite some time. They've opted to now look at a model for multifamily that can use a private pump station to, to sewer it, so, and then as part of that, in order to kind of get the density that would make it. So that would be, the purchase area is kind of this gray area that we show on plan. These kind of greenish areas would be the buildings, and then a parking drive in between. As far as access to the site, the use permit originally showed access to Northwest 14th Court, and then a right in, right out onto Fletcher Avenue. As was previously mentioned, we've had some conversations with LTU and gone to a full movement or right in, left in, right in, right out, left in movement off of Fletcher at the request of the homeowners association with Town Homes, we have taken away the connection to Northwest 14th Court. The deviation request that was previously discussed, we feel like the requirement is excessive for the land use that we are putting on here. The only user for this intersection or this drive with these turn lanes is the apartment complex that, what do you call it, 72 units, 74 units? So, very, very low volume turning movements. After we were denied, we went out and did a traffic count on Fletcher Avenue. Those counts were taken on July 29th, and then the trip generation was evaluated, so the trips into and out of the apartment site were based on ITE Trip Generation Manual, so a nationally recognized system. And then we analyzed the turning movements using a National Cooperative Transportation Research Program Report 457, again, nationally recognized process. The peak hour that was used for design in terms of most trips that we saw was 3:00 to 4:00 PM corresponds with shift change at Kawasaki, not surprisingly. So, in that analysis, we measured eastbound 521 trips and then our westbound 99 trips. Based on the analysis of that report, 457, that I mentioned previously, in order to even justify turn lanes as a cost-effective measure would require 844 trips eastbound and 247 trips westbound. So a 60% increase to the eastbound trips and 150% increase westbound. And again, that's just to justify a turn lane at all. The developer is not asking to eliminate the turn lane. They recognize that the city prefers those. We're simply asking that we reduce it down to a distance that is more manageable, particularly when we look at the cost of that. The 155 foot turn lanes that we are proposing come at a cost of about $451,000. To extend that to the 300 foot length that the city is asking is $687,000, so better than 50% increase in the cost of those for something, and again, by national standards is not even required. If you're curious about what a 150 foot turn lane looks like, we've got a lot of those around town. So this is O Street and Sycamore Drive, so just a bit west of 84th Street. There are left turn movements at that intersection from both directions. Eastbound is not even 100 feet. Westbound is about 130 feet. We can look at 84th and Holdridge, north and southbound, get it the right direction, north and southbound. Those on a very busy street are currently about 150 feet in each direction. And we can look at 84th and O Street on the eastbound approach, or westbound approach, that left turn lane is about 130 feet, and I would point out that the pavement was just redone last year on the southbound, or south approach. There's no right turn at that intersection, very busy intersection, and LTU determined it was not required for safety, and they did not install it. So, what we're asking, we believe, is reasonable for the use that's there. While the traffic, the city's transportation policy would suggest that, national standards do not require it, so. That I've got?
Yeah, I'd like to add that in the staff report of September 4th, in the first four pages, affordable housing was mentioned 14 times. Yet, we've got a policy in place for developers that say, spend an extra $250,000 for turn lanes when we can clearly show that it's not justified. We don't disagree with putting in a turn lane right and left, even though it's not warranted based on the traffic counts. So I just, you know, if we're gonna, how to get to affordable housing, we gotta take our opportunities, I'll use that word, to reduce the cost to developers and the future residents of Lincoln. That's all I've got on that. Thank you. Time to answer questions.
Questions, council? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Council Chair. I have one question, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the second example that you chose on O and 84th Street. I think you were suggesting that there's no turn lane in that, I'm sorry, what part did you say?
So, on the northbound approach has no right turn lane.
And that justifies not needing a left turn lane into the development? Can you equate?
Okay, so, so the development is proposing both a...
And if you could make this just a little larger, sorry. Thank you.
There you go.
Okay.
So we're proposing a westbound left in and an eastbound right turn lane in.
So what you want, you just want to shorten them?
Correct.
Both the right lane and the left lane?
Correct. And I guess I bring these other examples up, if you drive those, you know, the comment was made, in order to safely slow down, you need 250 feet. I would challenge you, if you drive these examples that I give you, do you feel like you're slowing down too fast? Do you feel like you're going to rear end someone? I drive them regularly. I don't see that, even when we have, you know, several cars stacked in front of you. It is a policy of our access management that exceeds national standards, and for whatever reason, that is what has been adopted.
The other part of that that I'm going to point out is we're landlocked here. We're talking about, this is not going to increase, the traffic flow into this will not increase. We're asked for 72 units, it doesn't connect through to the neighborhood, this is the max.
Just mainly access and egress out.
Correct. Correct.
But right now, the road, the development doesn't exist, so there's no, there's no one turning in and out of this area, so you're adding 72 units?
Correct.
And so at some point, people will be turning in?
Yes.
And I understand, now I understand what you're trying to equate. 84th and O has a stoplight, and this has a, this doesn't have a stoplight that we're approaching, and there's a slight curve on this road, so I don't know how far in advance people can see. If they're doing 45, and if it matters at 45 at dusk, 45 at night, 45 in the middle of the day.
And we did, as part of the deviation request, did submit to LTU exhibit of side distance, and that side distance greatly exceeds what is required by national standards.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? James?
I just had, I hope is an easy question. The July 29th traffic count, did you all do that, or was that provided to you because the city did that?
That was done by E&amp;A staff. The city currently has no traffic counts at this location.
How did you decide on the date of July 29th and the time period from 3:00 to 4:00?
Fun question, because the first day that we chose was closer to July 4th, and we found out it was a plant shutdown at Kawasaki, and thought that probably wouldn't be a particularly It was a date that kind of just worked in our schedule. We were trying to find something that would be a typical day for Kawasaki employees, knowing that's the major, major traffic producer in this area.
Were you out there just in the evening of both?
We did, we were there for 24 hours.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was just from 3:00 to 4:00.
The peak hour is what we designed to, so, yeah, we monitored for a full day, and then we analyzed that, and we find what is the peak time that will have the biggest impact, and that was a 3:00 to 4:00 PM timeframe.
And your numbers don't include like the projected increase that there would be because of the development going in?
That is factored in.
That is factored in?
Yes.
Okay, just curious. Thanks.
Just another question. Yeah, Councilman Duden. Can you, can you describe what the slope is like in this area approaching this intersection? Is it at the peak of a hill, or the bottom of a hill?
Generally, it slopes, or the grade of the road is going from the east to west out there, so from 13th and Fletcher toward Kawasaki, if you will, it's coming down.
So is it all just downhill?
Yeah.
Right in that area?
Pretty, pretty much. It's a gradual slope, there's not a lot of change. I wouldn't say it's more than 2%, 2% to 3% at best.
So, so this is a profile of Fletcher in that area, so the roundabout is up here, and it's pretty much a constant slope down to the west.
Give a scale of distance and...
So, well, this distance here is 500 feet. That's what we needed to show for side distance. So, in the blue here, that's the 500 foot view corridor.
And these are five foot increments.
Yeah, five vertical increments.
So about 15 feet.
So in essence, with the, what's the dollar amount that this would change?
Just over a quarter million dollars.
Thank you, Chair Carlson. Rick, Bob, thanks for coming forward, appreciate it. The 72 units on this size of parcel is a pretty healthy unit count per acre, and I think that the city is trying to do its best to facilitate by moving detention off-site. Rick, if detention was not moved off-site, how many units would you be looking at?
Realistically, probably half.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Other questions?
I have a question for Director Elliott.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
So, obviously, I take this road nearly every single day, very familiar with Kawasaki shift changes. In response to the applicant's testimony about costs and federal standards, I was curious if you have any response.
So a couple different things on here. There are, as we know, different standards that people look to. Ours are focused on ASHTO, and so these ones, they reflect what they're referencing, they're reflecting capacity, but not the safety component on this. As you know, in this area, one with the bend and curve, the 45 miles an hour speed limit, we're lucky if people drive 50 mile an hour in this area. So knowing that the habit, as with many arterials and 45, we're going to get higher speeds, many of the federal guidelines are assuming you're entering the turn lanes at 35 mile an hour, not the 45 plus that people in this area will do, and you put that together with the bend and the road, the inclines in that area, as well as the additional capacity that we will see. And it's not, it is not an 84th and O Street, there's not many intersections that compare to 84th and O. But if we went around and said, yes, there are other turn lanes that are shorter in Lincoln, absolutely, and I would say we learned from those mistakes, and we learned from those bad decisions, that when we shorten these turn lengths, we are going to have higher crashes, and in the end, that is a higher cost for our community, whether it's in the damage and injuries that our community sees. And we've been committed as a city that we are Safe Streets Lincoln Initiative, where we want to reduce those kinds of crashes, and if we continue to allow deviations that enhance crash risks, we're ultimately hurting ourselves, and I can't go back and fix all of the turn lanes, I wish I could, but what we are slowly doing and will continue to do is make improvements in those areas. But why create a bad situation when we don't have to here? We tried to work with, with the developer, we were able to come to terms on two out of the three, we just weren't quite there. We did propose shortening it by 50 feet to try and make some accommodation, because we do know these are not inexpensive dollar-wise, but for safety-wise, they're, they definitely have return on the investment.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Duden? For the applicant, how much would that savings help, the 50 feet that the city agreed to?
Probably about a fourth of what?
Fourth of a quarter of a million?
Yeah.
And Director Elliott, I would assume that the 50 foot reduction is still on the table?
It would be.
Other questions for Director?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we do the public first, or?
Okay.
Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this? Please come forward now. Any rebuttal by the applicant?
I guess I would just speak to the director's comment about looking towards safety, and again, I recognize that, again, we're proposing to add a turn lane where typically it's not even required. Those speeds are all factored in to the national standards. You know, the examples I showed you are 45 miles an hour roadways that we see today that, I guess I didn't look at crash data, but I don't think we see a lot of crash data, especially if we look at the first one I showed on O Street, which is probably more indicative of the number of, probably even higher of the turning movements that we would see at this location. So, and recognize that these numbers are all based on a, an analysis of what's the probability that there's going to be someone behind you? that there's going to be someone behind you that has to slow down when you move into the, into the turn lane or probability that there would be several cars stacked in that turn lane. And again, when we're talking about such low volumes, both for the turning movements and outside of that hour, traffic volumes are extremely low. So you have a very short timeframe where people may have to slow down if somebody's moving into a turn lane. Maybe they have to slow down five miles an hour or so to let somebody shift over. The majority of the time, there's going to be no impact with those shorter turns. It's a very short timeframe that that would even come into play. So those probabilities are certainly how a lot of this is factored in when they make their recommendations.
Moving forward.
Anyone from the public?
Is there anyone from the public like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please proceed.
We will move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. I'll call Item 7A, amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by P. This adjustment is in accordance with the terms of the parties bargaining agreement introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second by Beckius. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7B is approving the labor contract between the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Police Union for a term effective August 14th, 2025 through August 31st of 2028, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second by Washington. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
No, that was a thumbs up. I'm sorry.
All right. Seeing none, just double checking. All right, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Good catch. Glad you're watching.
That concludes Section 7. Section 8 is resolutions, first readings, Items 8A through 8C. Section 9 is Ordinance's First Reading and Related Resolutions are Items 9A through 9D. And Section 10 is our pending list, Items 10A through 10C.
Chair Carlson, I would move adjournment.
Second?
Second by Washington. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.